Alright, so Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, agenda approved. Review of the minutes from August 8, 2022, meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Any open public comment? Anyone on that wants to talk? Okay, no open public comment. No guests. Good stuff.
Uh, paving on Gibbs and Taylor Hill looks nice and the guy's been doing some sidewalk crossing painting. That looks good. Just in time for school.
Yeah, I think there was only one comment I saw. From Walt up here. He spilled some paint and...
Oh.
And his cat cut it.
It's a good thing I'm not a painter because I always spill paint.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, so those things happen.
Not good stuff, Bruce.
It is funny though.
We have a lot of eyes watching us.
Yes.
Um, our yards, last concert, other than at the Fall Festival, is next Wednesday, August 31st.
Who you gonna have it?
It is called...
Green something.
Yeah, I just looked at it today to... Oh, I have it.
Green...
Green?
Green banding?
Nice. Hold please.
Yes, uh...
Green Brothers.
Green Brothers Band. Rhythm and blues, rock, reggae, Latin and jazz.
Hey.
Little of everything.
Good.
Yes.
Nice.
And there's a couple of movies showing at the Union Church on Saturday about Vermont marble.
Oh.
Okay.
They've got a movie that came from 1937 and then they've got another one, a newer one. Seven, uh, seven o'clock.
Cool.
Thank you.
Pair of shelves.
Alright. Highway Department. Department's report.
Alright, so you have Kyle Thornton's updated report, which I like. It's, it's broken down into... I was a little nervous because I knew he was handwriting it, but it's broken down into days and he's got pretty good handwriting.
He does.
So I think it's a good start and we can always kind of clean up and make revisions as we kind of get into it and find out how his rhythm is.
Looks good to me.
Yeah.
I was actually told he, um, down on West Street, there were, um, trees hanging over like the easement onto the sidewalk, which is up to the, I think, the landowner to take care of. But they didn't, and Kyle went down and trimmed the whole thing so that you could, because people couldn't see coming up, that side street, that little side. Curry Street. Uh, so they said he did a great job.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think Kyle really understands kind of the, um, he knows how to work with residents, but also knows where municipal boundaries are. Um, so we kind of share the same values there. It's been going really great.
No, this is good. I like the break.
Uh, additions to this include a site visit from, uh, an A and R engineer for the grants and aid. I've included in your packets the criteria we have for that MRGP. Uh, he, he thinks with the 10 cubic yards, we're gonna fall within the range of not needing a stream alteration permit. Uh, so, so we should be able to get both of those culverts done this year as planned, next to the highway, um, next to the garage. And then, uh, final notice for right-of-way encroachment on Meadow Street went out and those were the bushes that were planted there. And I'll wait...
Old Gorn Bridge.
Old Gorn Bridge, you're right. And I'll wait for a response from them soon.
Yes, they're still not moved.
No, just sent a letter out. Um, they should begin it today or tomorrow.
That was the second letter.
This is the second letter that goes in more detail about the, uh, strategies moving forward. And then, uh, we've got the South Street Radar sign all set up and down at the shop. We're just waiting for the stabilizers to show up. The marble bridge bases are powder coated and we'll pick them up soon. Uh, the, that's in your warrant. It costs about $800. As soon as we get the checks, I'll send Kyle and them to go pick them up. And then I spoke to the, the mason who's repairing the Chaffee Art Center. He's doing, uh, he's, he's doing the, the mason work. I think he's just doing the ground and stuff. I was hoping you'd have a little bit of information on it.
No, I resigned from that.
Oh, did you? Okay. Busy. So, um, anyway, he, he's supposed to be getting back with me to give me a quote and then we can kind of start on, building a grant application to, to hopefully get that work done. And, uh, Florence Bridge culvert and ditch repairs are complete. Tim Rice will be, will begin paving in September in conjunction with, uh, the Pittsburgh side that needs to be done. And the word that I got today was that they're gonna begin installing that box culvert this week on the Pittsburgh side.
Did, did you hear any response or did you get a chance to get ahold of Irving about 19 West Street?
No, and, um, I, I apologize for that because I thought it was a different lot. I thought it was, because there's kind of two triangles. When you come into town, there's the first one and then there's a second one.
Where's the second one?
Uh, when you're coming into West Street, I think there's one, there's a triangle right at the market.
The market, yeah.
So when I drove past it, I kept thinking, oh, they must have fixed it, the problem that Bruce was talking to me about. And so I saw the next one and yeah, we're gonna have to talk to him. I think a more serious conversation needs to be had with them on their, on their remediation of that lot. Not just kind of care and maintenance of it, but the remediation of it. Long-term remediation.
You know, they, they own the property and...
Because fine them can...
They need to take care of it.
So, I'll, I'll...
Especially there because of the traffic coming different ways. You can't see anything.
And, and it just kind of looks like they took a bush hog through there and paved it up pretty good.
That's what they've done every year for the last...
Oh, is that right?
If you get time, would you just check see if the taxes are getting paid on that?
Uh, uh, yeah, I can.
There shouldn't be any water sewer charges there.
Uh, yeah. And then I'll just call them and... And that's what, that's what concerns me a bit. If they haven't been doing it for five years. I know they gave us a, uh, we, we might just, if they're violating ordinance, we have to, might, may go down that route. Just worries me because I've heard that this has been ongoing for five, for five years. I wonder what the solution to fixing it would be.
You know, if we're gonna expect that out of landowners and homeowners, that's not a very good example.
Why wouldn't water and sewer be on that lot? There was a house there and they had water and sewer. And when the house burnt, was that part of the, um, issue with that individual in Greens Square that they weren't picking water and sewer?
Yeah, why the...
So I'm just curious why they wanted to build water. There is a hookup for that. So if I own a lot and need to have a hookup for it, it used to be that you had, um, i- i- if you actually had that connection, you got to pay water and sewer. And that's a billable lot if it was cleared and it has a connection there. There was a house there. So I'm just curious what the difference is between that and the house that burned block.
Didn't we waive those for the house that burned?
Eventually.
Yeah.
Well, he left the cellar hole for quite a time and if I remember right, we weren't sure if he was gonna rebuild or not and he wasn't sure.
Right.
Then he finally said, "I'm not going to build."
Right. But the lot is then, was then offered with water and sewer available and was still available with water and sewer.
Yeah. I, you know, the Irving lot, I don't believe that's billable due to the pollution.
Yeah.
That's why they own it.
Oh, I, I know what they own it. But I guess then that would be the flipside why, well, because you were just talking about like it was a developable lot first place, so that also...
Well, if Michael, you know, referred to it, it would be good if they could clean it up and make it a saleable lot. You know, certainly, uh, would be increased tax value for... That it just let it sit there.
Yeah, it, it has been something that I haven't had really much time to wrap my mind around, but I do wonder if it would qualify as a brownfield. So even...
But they know, but they know more about brownfields than we do, Charlie. And you said they weren't too bad to deal with. I mean, at least talk to the gentleman that you were dealing with.
Seems like if it was buildable, they would have sold it.
Yeah.
You know?
Had to be a lot of environmental work to make that buildable.
Yeah. I'm sure. Through all kinds of water.
Well, there was enough so they bought it before the house done.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay. Your equipment purchasing bid solicitation?
After going through our rolling stock, staff suggests that we need to purchase a new tool cab and trade in the old one. Kyle's actually kind of worried about not making it through this winter. So estimated cost ranges are 70 to 90 before trade-in. I've got bids out, uh, to, to regional Bobcat dealers and then I've got, uh, an advertisement in the Brandon Herald, uh, Brandon Reporter. So next select board meeting where we're opening closed bids.
That seems to be a piece of equipment that I see a lot on the road, so that's good.
What did they have? Remember last year when, I don't know if it was last year, we had to get, um, new trucks the state puts in where the bidding, like you can get like all the towns, municipalities join in. They have to use your new equipment. You can get on this list and get, get them at them prices. You may want to check with the league too because sometimes there are newsletters or post things that are, you know, for sale or something.
Yeah, I can keep an eye out.
See if the city has one.
Yeah. I, I'm sure they get beat to death over these things.
Right, right.
Or we check.
South Street sidewalk schedule?
And the South Street sidewalk is, the project is running slightly ahead of schedule. An updated timeline is included in your packets. Estimated completion is still summer of 2024.
Anybody have questions? I would, huh? Alright, is there a motion to go to the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Gorn Bridge Road Water Project Bid Solicitation.
I didn't start these with, with closed bids. I thought since we had the materials, it would be a bit cheaper. Um, but the first bid I, I got was not to give away the exact price, but I got $5,000.
Just, just so I know, is this going down to Judy's house or is this the one with the three, um, one?
This is, this is the water project that will connect, uh, the main, the water main that runs down North Street.
And under the...
It'll run 300 feet down, uh, Gorn Bridge one and it'll connect one, three, and five Gorn Bridge to that line. And then they'll put a flushing hydrant on the end.
So it's not the sewer part of this, okay.
Yep. And, and so the first bid came in to around 50,000. I went in and halted, I, I halted it there because it's gonna trigger a closed bid process, which, which does require a good bit of input administratively. And then I, I printed off a copy of our procurement policy. So if anything over 20,000, um, our auditor's gonna look at this and, and they're gonna ask, "Well, did you get, um, security bonds and insurance requirements? Did you submit a plan and all that?" So it's gonna be a lot of legwork and contracts. So I guess my, my question now is, is this something that we want to wait until our RFQ is finalized? Or we, do we just want to push forward with it this year and, and put a little bit of time and energy into it?
Been out there, that problem's been out there for a long time.
I think we should inform them.
I didn't hear you, Judy. What'd you say?
Fire.
Hmm?
Said, joking.
She said we should push forward.
Thank you.
No problem.
Let me translate.
I think we should...
Follow with it.
I think we should wait and bid it this fall for next summer and hopefully get a better price. That's my opinion.
I don't know, if we get a better price. Depends on what happens.
But, you know, I don't know if we will.
I think we definitely should.
Just to see how much it's gonna cost?
Yeah. I mean, that's just like, uh, just, because like we said, it's something that's been hanging over that we gotta take care of.
They, they have to submit a bid guarantee of 5% of the, of whatever the bid price is gonna be. So it is, once we get the ball rolling, it's rolling on it.
Right. Everybody's opinion?
I mean, at this point, we might as well walk to it. I feel like it's something that's been hanging over our heads for four years now.
At least.
I don't know about it.
Yeah.
I, I agree to go out for bid.
We have to agree? So I guess since, well, and, well, Tom was thinking next fall, so... I guess maybe a motion would be good, would be good to go out to bid or not to go out to bid for the project for this year.
Okay, is there a motion to allow Michael to go out to bid?
So moved.
Is you?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those not in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Water Department's report?
Uh, addition to this, in fact, I received a complaint from 61 Park that when the town rerouted his services, part of a past water project, I believe it was contract six?
Contract six.
Yes. They installed the wrong type of valve and because of this, water leaks in his basement. I put constantly on my notes, but I think it's more intermittently. Uh, I filled out an insurance claim just to see if it would be covered.
Is this valve outside?
Outside.
Oh, that's right, I didn't look there.
They had to reroute services because he went out to back, kind of over to that Gorn Bridge. They rerouted it out the front. And he, he said he had spoken with John about it before, um, but he said he was either gonna get a plumber down there to fix it and bill us or we could send a plumber. And instead of that, I just went in and reached out to pass it to see if it would be covered under the claim.
I mean, there's no damage, was there?
No, but he has to collect water in a bucket. And it leaks out the valve.
I don't think it'd cover as a claim because nothing was damaged.
Well, that's what I was, I, I actually reached out to pass it to ask what they thought I should do about it and they said, "Just go ahead and maybe get a shot."
So we put the valve in and it's just faulty?
Uh, he's claiming it's in, it's in, in the valve.
Seems old valve then ought to be...
I thought we hired the plumber.
You did.
Yeah.
We should just have the plumber go and fix that.
And they only went in certain houses. Everybody, everybody had a, a different contract.
No, we were in the basement? No, okay.
No, there were only three house...
Yeah, there was only a...
Three houses, I think.
Sure, four, yeah.
Yeah, then Puzzle House, maybe a little bit of shit else. I had, I actually had the contract for, and it's like four or five, I think. Well, okay, it would be right there. It wouldn't be a more than that.
No.
Those were the only houses that the plumber went in. The rest of our houses, the plumber did not go in.
Right.
Is that because they didn't have to go in to change up the valve or anything?
Because our, our, um, services are not getting rerouted. They came in the same place. Those, like Alan's house came in the back, Puzzle House came in the back. So he wanted everybody's to come in the front, so... I, if it were me, I'd want the guy to fix it because you sent the plumber inside my house to reroute my service.
Yeah, so I think that it's on the plumber.
Yeah, that's where I would start.
I mean, it sounded like our guys went in and did the work and did it.
No, there was that plumber that you hired, McLaughlin.
Right.
Yeah, I don't remember who it was.
McLaughlin.
Yeah, maybe it wasn't McLaughlin.
Yeah, I bet, my, usually the contracts cover like a year, which were passed.
Yeah.
So did it just start dripping down?
Uh, no, it's, it's been, it's been dripping, but here's the other thing. He said it wasn't until they made, they upgraded some of the, uh, services in, some of his utilities inside the house, that's when it started. Well, I know, but you kind of led me through the claims part because...
Because it may not, they'll, they'll look into it and it could be his fault, his responsibility.
Yeah.
Let's, let's let that play out.
Yeah, I would just...
Sorry, I could have added that part, but it's a lot to add to the story, yeah.
Alright. All the pieces are good, we got it. Alright, Supervisor's report?
In your pack, oh yeah, it's still underwater. In your packets, it's my result from digging into the old agreements. As you can see, everything within, within X, includes account holders that either don't have an agreement or play, in place or have failed to make payments in a timely manner. I plan to send out notices by the end of August to these homeowners.
Till next week?
Next week, but yeah.
That part is gonna be shut off?
Correct, it's gonna be their 30-day notice and then, um, after 30 days, we have 15 days to disconnect them. Ideally, they come in here and make an agreement because that would be a lot of labor. And to go out and go and make that many shut offs.
Yeah.
You'd hope it'd be straightforward, but a lot of them are hard to find and after you do find them, they're...
We're lucky to get five at a clip, you know?
Yes.
That's a, that's a really good...
I would definitely go after the high-end ones first.
Yes, that's what we're hoping.
Yeah, that's what I'll do. You know, ideally, they come in here and make agreements.
So how about instead of being overly ambitious, we do the top 10?
Okay.
Yeah. Drive and chase all these, it's not gonna happen. No, no, just a handful is more than the guys can...
Yeah, I was, I was leaning towards just send shut-off notices and cross our fingers and hope they come in here and do it and we're not overwhelmed. But Celia actually had, uh, the suggestion of just sending them a, um, letter saying, "You are delinquent, you don't have an agreement and you need to come in and make it." So, so what do you think? Send 10 shut-off notices to the top and then the remainder get a notice to come in and make an agreement?
Well, the thing is, they've already had notice. That's the thing we keep doing is we keep giving notices and they fail and we give them another notice, they fail and we give them another. And so I think, I thought we changed that. So we give them a notice, they keep the agreement, if they fail, we shut it off.
I think I was gonna give them the opportunity to sign the new updated agreement because these people never, never even came in to make an agreement.
When you send them the shut-off notice, do you give them 30 days from the date that they received it or the date that you wrote the letter? What's, what's the deal?
The date, so when you send, when you send the, um, I don't have the statute right in front of me, but I, I feel confident in saying that when you send the letter out, 30 days after, no, so 30 days after payment, they are delinquent. And then after you send the letter out, I believe you, it's 15 day, you have 15 days to shut it off.
That's more than enough time to come in and make arrangements.
I, I, I want these people to come in and, and make agreements is what I want them to do more than anything.
Right. Um, see at the bottom of the list, the third up from the bottom and the second up from the bottom? If I'm reading this correctly, it looks as though there was a current total and an agreement maybe on some date in March, but then nothing. It certainly hasn't come down.
The amount at, uh, so I, I should have, I should have had these columns the other way around, but the, uh, column on the right, uh, the amount at the agreement. So if we're talking about St., uh, if we're talking about 27 William Street, they owe $2,600 at the agreement. And now they are at $2,400 and they made the agreement back in March.
Correct, and look at that dollar amount.
They made one payment.
They made one payment.
Yeah.
So they hold it.
Shut-off notice, you know, and the one below it. I mean, the... I just don't know. They've all had plenty of time. It's not a nice situation, but you still have to do what you have to do.
Yeah, and I do know, I mean, this is one kind of tricky part to me is that we do have to, we have to afford them the opportunity to make an agreement.
Yes.
So those that do not have them on the books, I'd say, I'd say to them, we send a letter saying to come in and make an agreement. And then to the others with the high amounts, as you suggest, send a shut-off notice. Maybe top 10? Is that what we said?
Sounds okay.
So top 10 get shut-off notices, everybody else gets a letter from agreement?
Uh, those, yes.
What's the last?
Board?
What's the last date we can shut off? Is it November?
Yeah.
First?
Yeah.
Don't.
I haven't got much time.
Well, October? Yeah, we could do, November 1st, so we could do two rounds. We could do the first 10 and then two weeks later do the second 10.
Yep. You need to check with Kyle. The first top 10. We need to get those located if they haven't been located.
Yeah, Kyle, I think pretty early on in his, uh, new position, we discussed that this was, this would be prioritized when, when the notices went out, so I'll make sure. I gotta meet with him in the morning. I'll discuss our strategy with him and then he can go out and do some reconnaissance.
Yeah, because I don't know if the top 10 all have shut offs. We'll find out. That's something we should be tracking too because I, I believe we're going out double here checking again on shut offs.
So didn't John say that they had written the book? He said that at one meeting? That one that went out and found the shut offs that were recorded in the book?
Yeah, he had told me he was doing that too.
What book is that?
I've never seen the book.
I have no idea. I just know that we gave her after that shut off, that shut off, that were recorded in the book.
The list that Celia used to give us has whether there's a shut off or not.
Yeah.
So at least that had, at least up to date from the last time she updated, it had a list.
Yep.
And I don't think any new ones have been installed since the last time she updated that.
Rumor is, there's a location book.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that's what it is. That's what it meant. No, I mean, he did say that, I'm not just...
Oh, yeah, I heard it.
I'd like to see, uh, you know, you or Kyle or somebody putting them on our computer flights here when we find them and locate them. Know exactly where they are, not in, not in the pocketbook, it's in your back pocket.
Okay, so top 10, so top 10 will get shut off notices and others get notices to make agreements. And I feel confidently that they'll come in here.
And those are only the ones who never have the agreement?
Yes.
And what about, like, there used to be, uh, understanding that if the amount was a certain amount that was supposed to be divided out, the payment was supposed to be that. So within X amount of time, it would be paid off. And some of the amounts up here, there's no way that we're gonna get caught up.
But for instance, there's one that's 50 a month. That one has been argued with Celia before because he does have a signed agreement. So we can, we, we could challenge him or we could get into a legal...
Yeah, I, I thought we, we talked about if, they have to pay the regular, what's current due and pay the arrears, pay whatever's delinquent. So they... and pay the arrears, just pay whatever is delinquent, so they, the off months, they could pay that payment, but it's got to be enough so within a year's time, they pay this debt off.
And that's our new, that's our new contract that we're forming, but there's old contracts that people have, that people have agreed to. And, and, and argue the case, and Celia tells them, you will never make it and they argue back, well, we have a signed agreement.
But do they pay the current first?
Uh, I, I don't think the agreement is that detailed.
Because if they just, if they say they owe a thousand dollars and they pay fifty dollars on that and then the current one, they're not paying anything, they'll never catch up, so to me, the agreement's null and void, you know, they're not, they're not paying what they're supposed to be paying. And, I mean, all, all these that never claimed they had gotten agreement or a letter, which I'm sure is the case, I would make sure they're under the new agreement that we have.
Oh, oh yeah, for sure, so the people that have never made an agreement will.
Will know that they've got, that, yeah, right.
And it, it's just those older ones, I was a bit nervous about calling and saying, oh, I know you have a signed agreement on the file, but guess what, we're going to make you sign a new one, that made me a little nervous.
The only thing I'd say though is like for the one that you're talking about with fifty dollars a month, they haven't paid on it, so they violated the agreement, so the agreement doesn't exist.
That's right.
Yeah.
So as far as I'm concerned, that's void.
Yeah, I would send them a shut off notice.
We'll make a car payment, see what happens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I didn't write the date down because that was one, some of the really older ones, I'm not sure if he's been making his, his fifty dollar a month, but I can go through the accounts and, and double check. And, and I, and I can, what I'll do is I'll go through this list again because I've got the hard raw data and now I just, I can have Mary print me off, hey, when was the last time they, they made a payment or did they miss a payment? And then if they did, then that agreement is null.
Because that's the only one that says it makes a payment, but doesn't give a date of the agreement or the amount of the agreement at the time?
Uh, it, it does, it, I just didn't write it down there because, um, it was like the last one I'd looked at and Celia sounded as if she had already been in an argument about this in the past, so I felt pretty confident that he had been making his, his fifty dollar a month payments. That, I think that's the only, that's the only line of data there that isn't complete.
Well, let's get these top ten and at least he's making a fifty dollar payment, we'll catch up with him this winter.
Yeah. And then some of them I didn't want to mess with because they may, I mean, they may not be making every single payment, and then you had COVID, so I want, you know, you got to be careful there because if some of those payments were missed because of COVID, you know, are they protected? Uh, but some of them, you know, like, um, Fifteen Kane Street seems to be getting down there pretty good, they started at sixteen thousand, now they're at seven thousand. Looks like they might.
Was the renter took it on?
Might.
And so that was a weird agreement too.
Because we were going to shut it off.
It might have made a new agreement.
That's a novel.
I mean, I think anybody who's made payments in twenty twenty two, that's one thing, but anybody who's still, you know, this one, uh, one Gormbridge Road last made a payment in December of twenty twenty one.
Yeah, well, and that's the one we can't shut off.
Right.
Right, okay, then.
But when we make that new connection.
We can shut them off.
Nine River Street, September twenty twenty one. That's a long time ago.
Yeah, especially when it's four hundred a month, so obviously something's been missing there. Well, I appreciate feedback, I mean, you know, bring it to you because I don't want to overstep, you know, my bounds or anything, so as long as we're all on agreement with it, I'm happy.
Well, Michael, you've got like twenty seven Xs here, plus the two that I pointed out at the bottom of the page, so twenty nine. Would you be doing fifty percent of that group now and then the other fifty percent next time around, not just ten, but?
I don't think there's enough time to, if we try and shut everybody out, that would.
No, what I meant was like, do fifteen of these, say, for this time around and then whenever, whatever, not just ten, go for half of this bunch.
I'm going to, well, so I'm going to do ten shut off notices of the, of the top, of the highest accounts
Okay.
that are delinquent and aren't making payments on their agreement. And then everyone else that doesn't have an agreement or has broken their agreement is getting a, uh, letter to come in here and.
Gotcha, okay.
And, uh, sign an updated agreement form.
Works for me.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Yeah.
And it is down from our last four months, not as significant as the last one, but we still do have some BHA uh, applications pending. And, and in my notices, I, I'll make sure to remind people that that's sports out there in case they missed it last time.
We've been working on this long before you got here, Michael, so.
Yeah.
It is slowly coming down and we're glad to see that.
All right, is there a motion to go out of the Board of Water and Commissioners and into the Board of Sewage Commissioners?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All right, Theodore.
Aye.
Here is Waste Water Department's report.
So Kyle's report also encompasses the waste, the wastewater and water report, which was provided in the highway portion of your packet. And then, um, just to add on to the wastewater report, Champlin came on Thursday to inspect our current software system at the plant. Hey, Champlin spoke to me a couple of weeks ago about needing to update to Microsoft eleven and it was a pretty big price tag, it was between thirty and forty thousand dollars.
Will our computers handle that?
Uh, they were saying that, that, uh, that they would have to, so I guess that, that would be a part of the cost is to upgrade some of the hardware in there as, as well, so that.
Computers, yes.
That was the, that was the thirty or forty thousand that they estimated and then really what we're talking to them now is, you know, what's the cost benefit of transferring everything over to Missions because we use, um, and I'm, I'm speaking a language I don't really understand right now, I'm kind of trusting our water and wastewater guys on this and then what Champlin tells us, but, uh, what's the cost benefit of going away from SCADA, just, just transferring everything from Missions? They use Missions at the wastewater treatment plant, um, oh, we've got Dan Fernabansky that can kind of guide us through this as well. I think SCADA's kind of high level, uh, monitoring for bigger municipalities and localities and Mission might, Missions might be more well suited for us, so once Champlin, Champlin gives me the cost estimates, I think we'll, we'll be able to make a better decision, but I just wanted to let you all know that was on the radar.
I just follow Mission, is it?
I think it's like, uh, Mission to Mars, Mission. That's my wastewater addition.
Will the sewer project update?
Uh, the team met with A and R engineer to inspect the site and make necessary remediations to the area around the stream and wetland, all issues have been addressed by, uh, the contractor and engineer, a lot of it was just they wanted us to add a little bit more silt fence and have the A and R engineer a little more involved in the, um, changing of the project. Uh, you know, like the, the, the one, one correction we could have made was instead of, it, it, we had the construction road going down about ten feet over to the right than we did, than we actually put it. So they just want to see those kind of updates and, uh, we've been, we've been timely in making the corrections that were asked for.
See, uh, when we were down there last week, they had run into a little ledge, we were going to try and go over the ledge instead of through it.
Yeah, and they think that's going to be possible.
And, uh, when I saw Rick, uh, Friday, they're going to try to go down into the ledge about a foot and they record, uh, the manhole, you know, the fixture, so that they're going to do that, but the A and E doesn't feel the, that three feet is enough, so they want to go try to get to four feet. And then they'll put blue board and, and dirt underneath there, but only having to deal with an extra foot, that was the thing late Friday afternoon. When I saw them.
Because their ledge price is very, well, substantial.
Yeah, I'll meet, I plan on getting out there today, but in that time, getting ready for the auditors Thursday and it's supposed to rain tomorrow, so I'd be surprised if they're there, if I ride by and check on the shed, get a project update. We should have a construction meeting coming up soon too.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll send you an update when I get there.
Anything else?
Uh, the twenty ninth is the construction event.
Next week.
Yeah, next Monday.
But other than that, projects going very well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I really.
Rick did mention, uh, we might mention that to the, to the sheriff, he said the vehicles coming down through that Pleasant Street, uh, seems though they're coming down quite fast, so you might mention that to the sheriff's department.
Okay.
If you, if you hadn't talked with him, um, about that, uh, that's what he was saying Friday when I was down.
Yeah, Sheriff Fox asked me to reach out to him anytime I, I heard a complaint like this. He actually wanted to come to our meetings more regularly, he mentioned that to me, like maybe quarterly, so.
Thanks.
Maybe in October, send him an invite.
I was wondering if they should put like a cone on North Street where they put that gravel in? Just to kind of make, like, because people fly around that corner and they fly up there and they hit that and it just, it's going everywhere and I just think if a cone's there, it might slow, so like put it in the middle of it so that they can hit it if they have. Some people like to get the stone.
Yeah, I can, I can reach out to them, they've been, Zaluzny and them have been really responsive to any.
Yeah, this is a different cooler than we had last time.
Same form of them.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Wow, it's, something sure changed.
Anything else in the Board of Sewage Commissioners? All right, is there a motion to go back into the regular select board, the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, managers' report.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, the, uh, so I've been training the new zoning administrator, Anthony and I met to go over the bylaws permitting and various admin duties, plus constant expectations for what the planning commission usually has. And, uh, he's never taken minutes before, so that's another thing, I'll probably sit in, well, I'll probably sit in every planning commission meeting, but I, I might, uh, take the minutes for a little while and just show on the routes.
Thank you.
The assistant town clerk and treasurer, the search for a new assistant clerk continues unfortunately, but Celia and I did have a, a backup list of applicants. As soon as the auditors leave at the end of this week, we'll have them come in and they're all local, so they should be fast and, um, hopefully we can find somebody out of that pool, get a new assistant town clerk here, as great as Mary is, but, uh, yeah, we'll probably, she deserves some rest. And, uh, so this almost went under good stuff, but I was, I was nominated as an emergent leader here in Vermont and, uh, without cost. I attended the twenty twenty two Vermont Community Leadership Summit at Vermont Technical College, there were over four hundred local leaders present, Lisa Misler was there and I attended sessions relating to community engagement, problem solving on the local lever, level and then was introduced into some new grant opportunities. Really good news is I was nominated by the VTCMA to attend the International City Town Managers Association Summit in Columbus, Ohio this September. The state and ICMA are paying for registration, lodging and travel, the summit is from Saturday the seventeenth to the following Wednesday and, uh, you know, just to kind of go on, events like these are pretty important for me to kind of continue honing my skills as a local leader and town manager and, uh, and I probably won't do this again for a long time because they're pretty expensive and, uh, I think the opportunities are rare. But, uh, I'm excited about the trip.
That's great.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, I had a planning meeting with Devin Neary and we, we spoke about downtown parking. I provided a memo in your packets, uh, the planning commission was also provided this memo. Uh, we walked the length of the Beaver Pond Trail as well and discussed future opportunities, connect regional trail systems. I think there were some past projects, uh, with partnering with other localities that didn't come to fruition because of COVID or some other reasons, maybe in the future revisiting that. And, uh, even some, um, national wide planning for like, uh, mountain bike trails and stuff going up and down the east coast, you know, maybe coming through Rutland and, uh, Devin's a big mountain viker, so he, he's kind of got his finger to the pulse on bike trails, so, yeah, we had overall a good meeting and he's excited about the, the trail and kind of the, the ideas that Proctor's coming up with. And, and we speak more about that in, in discussion and action item, uh, of the board meeting. I met with Vermont sweetheart, uh, Hallie Raleigh Elliott, she wanted to place an installed food drop off sharing stand, um, somewhere in the park, um, but instead I, I walked her up to the Proctor Union Church and she liked the idea of placing it at their community garden, uh, Bruce helped me find a good contact for her. She wants to put a, um, like a, a refrigerator in, um, and she had pictures and a whole pamphlet on it, it looked nice, but we would have to run electricity through it all the time and, uh, and, and it would be a little more in the public eye, I think, if it were in the park or, or on the grounds here, so she might be a little safer somewhere that's already kind of designated as a food, uh, sharing location, like that church up there.
Yeah, and there's, there's been some discussion because all the stuff from the, the garden area has been going up to the food shelf.
Oh, I know.
She posted something on Facebook, it's basically if you have extra stuff that you don't need, you drop it out there and people need stuff, they just go and take it.
But mostly like produce from gardens during this time of year or anything?
I think it's anything basically.
Really?
But, uh.
She agreed to claim it too once a week. She works on, uh, snow cats up at, uh, Killington. Is that what they're called?
Killer cats?
Yeah.
But that may, there may be some changes there because, you know, the intent was to have it for Proctor people.
Right.
When, uh, Jack Conant left the money, so.
It's a beautiful garden.
It's too bad, I wonder if people.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of stuff in there.
Uh, pool season's coming to an end, I, I met up there with.
You missed the, um.
Oh.
Zion Rivers.
Oh, Zion, yeah. Oh, forgive me, uh, so Zion plans to close on the building by the end of the month, I, I met with them and Ben Doyle separately, to kind of talk about the, the cell, uh, there was still one tiny environmental, um, issue to close out with Brella and, and that was done before the sale, before the, the sale took place. So Ben just wanted to come by and, uh, that's one thing I asked him to take care of before transferring it over to Zion and he, he did. And he, he worked with the state to hustle that process. Uh, Brandon McFarlane, co-owner of Zion, has a background in municipal planning, he's got a master's in public administration and a master's in business administration, so we met and discussed previous planning efforts of the town, like, uh, I, I sent them the, the future plan and the prosperity plan, so he just kind of wanted to act about what some of the intent of that were and what kind of ideas Proctor has for the future and I, I pretty much just spat. just spat straight out of the 2020 municipal plan, small industry, you know, arts and crafts, no, not arts and crafts, but kind of artisan shops and stuff like that, so. It was a really great meeting, and one kind of neat thing to add is, we didn't go into great detail about this, but I believe one of the contingencies of the sale was that a small green space be made available to the community somewhere in front of the building, and we talked about maybe that becoming a trailhead for the future Beaver Pond path, and then doing some historic signs and all that, so, that was just my brainstorming idea, not to say that's what's gonna happen to the space, when that day comes, it'll be a community discussion.
With some mountain trees, it could be like 20 feet tall by the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, oh, and I did mark some trees over here to get cut down, and I took one mark off, I do that stuff so that people can come and correct.
Yeah.
So, so we've got some trees marked over there, and Kyle was also excited about getting some of them down.
Does he know when, because I'm just concerned, like, when we have the Fall Festival, the horses go over where those really dead trees are, so I don't know if they'd be cut down by then and.
You want them to or not?
Is he gonna take the trunks out, too?
They're not really big, so I think you could probably rip them out of the backhoe or something, you know, I don't think you need a stump grinder.
Okay.
Is it, so you're saying it's good that the trees are there for the horses or bad?
Well, no, they're dead.
Oh, you don't want them to trip.
There's nothing, yeah, they're just, I'm afraid of falling.
Falling. I think he's got some marked up by the bridge, one down here, one right across the street, where are you talking?
Right, right up here, those two that are just like, they look like they got, they were in a forest fire, they're just like dead branches all the way up.
The Adams family.
Yeah, there's two of them right there, and that's normally with the horses circle, which is fine, I mean, if they're standing, it's fine, but I just don't know the process of.
Yeah, it's one, it's on, that's gonna be like one of his, like, Thursday, Friday jobs, like, if they don't want to start something bigger, they've got a few other things on the list, but I imagine it'll be done for Fall Festival.
Okay, all right.
And.
Make sure they fill the hole if there's a hole.
Yeah, well, and then, and then more and more Proctor may were asked for some new trees and put them over there to replace the.
That'd be nice.
When you talk to Kyle, just speaking of firewood trees, ask him how he's doing with you for this winter.
Oh, okay, I see a big pile he's still got back there, but I'll ask him.
That garage is well insulated.
I bet they burn it throughout. And then, okay, so the pool season's coming to an end, excellent pool season, and I'm really hopeful that Gannon wants to return again next year, how, Lisa, you helped out this weekend, what do you think, have anybody come up there and say anything?
Yeah, they were busy on Sunday, yeah, Saturday, we had a open lay because practice starts and.
He's gonna do some coaching.
Yeah, he's a varsity coach.
Great.
But so are some of our life lawyers, too, so I went to the guy, and we had kids that were having a tuition for college, so they didn't open until one on Saturday, so, and I was busy Friday I sat, and yeah, I mean, we'd be boarding straight through to six o'clock, so, I mean, we've had, you know, people have been good, it's, I don't think we've had any issues that.
I haven't.
I mean, people don't love the leeches, but I tell you, yes, like together, they love to pour the salt on them, so.
Oh, dear. That's entertainment.
We show the circle of life with each other.
I think we're gonna, and we're doing some management up there, this, you know, before it opens next time, I've actually, now that I have a pool season under my belt, I think there's some low hanging fruit where we can, we can knock out to make it a lot better, so, I mean, it's already great, but a little bit better.
That's good.
And this is pretty admin heavy, but I noticed that some of our solar credits were going back into the shared bank, I've sent a list to all of our accounts to Green Maple so that they can allocate credits in the most useful way, all in all, just in an attempt to save some money, and that concludes my Andrews Report.
All right, everybody reviewed the bills inside it?
Yes.
Any questions? Sheriff's Report, any comments or questions on that? Violation of the grounds maintenance ordinance that you had mentioned before.
Yeah, and so what I, I just have a letter there that we sent to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can update that policy one day if you all would like, to give me the authority to do it, but it's just another layer of protection for me going out and going ham on people.
So, did we sell that one already?
It's a different one.
This serves as the first official notice of violation.
Yeah, it was a different access. Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, so you said about the other one was aligned with this.
Yeah, one's right away, so, and I'm the road commissioner, so I can, I can send, you know, them.
We already sent them all over.
To Goran Bridge.
Yeah.
Yes, we've sent them one before, and this second one actually goes in to explain that, that they will be charged if they don't remove it within 30 days, and this is for, this is just a grounds maintenance ordinance.
Right, okay, so what's the 30 days up on that?
I just, I just sent it in the mail two days ago, their notice for that 30 days, so it'll be 30 days to that, I got it on my calendar in there.
All right. Park and Ride Grant Application.
Yeah, so again, Devin and I met on this, we weighed the pros and cons of doing diagonal parking, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, or at least Ed and Devin, thought that the road was a bit wider there on Main Street, and I even ran a few tests parking the van in there diagonal, and the thought was maybe if you shifted the yellow, double yellow line over this way, that you'd have the space, but you don't, and it would be, it would be very costly to remove the sidewalk there, and then, you know, so really, your cheap option is just to put, if you want to do parallel parking, and you want to make it clear that that's parallel parking, to put just paint there, I think they're 20 by nine, it's a parallel spot, and then we talked about maybe off, if the town wanted to do off-street parking one day, it's pretty convenient that there's a stormwater inlet already in the grassy area over there, but then you're destroying green space for parking, and pervious pavers, I don't think is really a thing in Vermont with all the material that goes in the ground in the winter, so, so you're creating an impervious surface over what's already pervious, so I guess, you know, I think my suggestion, just kind of moving forward, and I think this would be a great opportunity one day for the board, myself, and the Planning Commission to get together and look at some of our old, well, our newer, updated, and our older plans, and put some kind of capital improvement plan together, so that when we have grant opportunities, we know which to jump at hard and which, and which not to really invest too, too much time into, so, I think this kind of just opens up that conversation.
So, are we, so we're not gonna apply for this grant?
Well, it would be up to the select board whether we apply for it or not.
I don't see any reason to, personally.
I don't.
No.
I don't even like the idea of painting.
No.
Parallel stripes, I feel like, I don't know, I feel like we've survived without them, and it's not like Proctor's booming with business and events constantly, and I think everybody kind of knows that they park along, I just feel like lines would just, I don't know.
Invite them.
Take, yeah, or take away the attractiveness of just having a, you know, a street go through, I don't know, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, and the only time people really park over there when it's really busy is, you know, Fall Festival, and near the end of graduation, I see a few people park there because they're taking pictures.
From.
From, so, I would say it would probably be low on the priority list.
And I'm not sure how many people would take advantage of parking in the middle of Route 3 to drive some, you know, it's just, it's not a, we're not on the way anywhere.
What about doing leased town parking, maybe here in this lot, if they would allow it?
That'd be a good spot.
Yeah, if they'd be so gracious, that front row would be great.
That was one of the things the Planning Commission, that's why they thought we should apply for it, because it's in our enhanced energy plan, we should do something.
I guess I don't get, I can't wrap my head around, did parking for what, I guess?
Well, parking.
Oh, so parks, so we could commute with other people?
Yes, or take the bus, hopefully, and we're thinking ahead maybe foolishly, but we're hoping Zion would catch on, employees and.
I mean, I would think once it comes to that point, it'd be better, now there's no, I don't find, I mean, pick up the bus, they're out town.
Yeah.
And we park in that lot even.
Do they have a, have they ever said there was a problem if people just randomly park there and walk around town, take pictures, tourist types?
No, I mean, the majority, when I've seen people park there, it's always been like at nights or weekends, and no one's, no one's, that whole half the parking lot isn't used because nobody's in that building.
No one's in that building?
No, the one up on the hill, the marble building.
Oh, yes, yeah.
We are gonna be requesting property right away from home, yeah, for the trail right across the street, so if we made that request a little bit bigger.
We could use part of that.
In the future.
Right.
Yeah, it would be there.
Yeah.
Let me just bring it back.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, selfishly, too, I think one day we might have to solve the parking out here, because I think the butt end of my van might be on Markowski's property.
That's one of these days that'll come to a head.
Who I'm meeting with this week to figure out the drainage issue, and we've got to get an easement to go to the storm drain there, so.
Well, maybe Zion will let you park across the street, you can walk.
Over here, I'm just gonna park Big Red right there.
Right, you might, right, you might go there.
I call it Big Red.
I haven't known this until, I'm driving through downtown Proctor.
But I think it's a solution in search of a problem, so I think at this point, I mean, if Zion does take off, if all of a sudden, that's when we need to kind of look at this.
And if people in town need a place to park because they need to take the bus or ride together, the town owns the pool parking lot, and there's a bus stop right down the corner, so, two birds, one stone.
Yeah, well, and there you go, and I don't disagree, it's just, you know, just reading off the plans, and the municipal plans do clearly state that when you do start, when these grant opportunities do present themselves, to find areas that would work best, and like you just said, there are other areas that would work best, better than here.
Yeah, you're not going over the bridge, you're a stone thrown from a major, and if we can apply and improve that regular, maybe we should try to do that, so, because it's used for multiple things rather than creating for something, and it was my understanding that the Caris Reals own the entire parking lot, I don't think the big building owns any part of that parking lot, I think that's a misnomer.
Originally, it was a shared.
No longer.
Yeah, no, I know, but it was originally shared.
I know, but it was just stated here that that's why.
The college was going to.
But they own the entire parking lot, and when we used it before to do things, i.e., that's where if you go to Boston for sixth grade, that's where the bus picture went from the park, you just, there's an individual there you call and speak to, and they're very good partners in the community, and have been since they came here.
Because the parking lot's never filled from them.
No.
Yeah, so we like downtown the way it is, I'm like 100% cool with that.
I like the idea of improving.
Administrative work.
Where is this parking lot?
I'd say the private areas.
I agree, no, I agree with you.
You said half the parking lot wasn't used, or someone, someone said half the parking lot isn't used because there's no one in the big building, this entire parking lot of the Caris Reals belongs to the big building.
Correct.
It no longer belongs to the building, well, someone just said.
I said that.
I thought you had said a little while ago that there already exists a parking lot that people use.
Well, I said people can use the pool parking lot.
Oh, okay, okay, I didn't hear you.
People park at the schools when they do things, I mean, there's a million places, people park at the rink on off-season, so, people park at the line.
We have places, we have places.
There's a stairway.
Oh, that would be excellent, well, Stan said he looked into that, but they were, the grant that he was looking at required ADA compliance, which I really can't wrap my mind around.
Yeah, I don't know.
Maybe a lift or something.
The saddle was let go, yeah.
Yeah.
Your body's here when you run down.
All right, so no motion needed. All right, anything else? There is motion to go into executive session to discuss employment for Public Officer 1 VSA 313A3, I tried to read it slowly for you.
I'm still having to take it.
Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.